Forcing their hand. And in most, most cases, it's okay, but in a lot of cases, they're forcing the putting a burden on the community. You'll, you'll never see another York or Gunkwood or Thelma, those kind of places because they have now deemed everybody equal.
Yeah.
So they can put a tiny house next to a million and a half dollar home.
Oh, yeah.
Nice switching.
Hey, 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 what's going on? That's so schoolish.
Do you want to turn your microphones on? They're gonna start.
I taught you well, right there.
I, I must have gone to a different school.
Do you want to turn your
The nuns didn't like it. They used rulers with pieces of metal with on it.
All right, it is 6:30. We're gonna call this meeting to order. 5:30. So used to it. So used to 6:30. 5:30, we're calling this meeting to order.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I've never heard this rule so loud.
Hang on.
All councils present?
Do you want me to make a motion?
I make a motion.
You make a motion.
I make a motion that we suspend Robert's rules of order in order to move the appointment of Shannon Sturgis to the planning board to the top of the list. Number 10.2.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, so then we have to. We can just move right into.
I'm on a roll. Um, Shannon, would you, Shannon, would you like to come up and introduce yourself, spouse, please?
Sorry, I should have just made the most.
Hi, I'm Shannon Sturgis. I'm Shannon Sturgis. I just moved to town and I want to be involved. Um, I have two kids, one's in third grade. She's an eight-year-old girl, a two-year-old boy. And, yeah, so here I am.
Uh, Shannon, welcome to the community. On, on the questionnaire, it says making sure the small, close-knit Town and Mechanic Falls stays that way, not looking to change anything major. Could you?
Yeah, because it's a small, close-knit town, and I found moving here from out of town, people aren't so keen to having out-of-towners come in, so I don't want people to think that I'm coming from out of town trying to make it my town. I'm trying to keep it the same and follow the rules and make sure everything works out for the citizens of the town and not just my benefit or any from out, anybody from out-of-town's perspective.
How do you feel about, uh, businesses coming in town, attracting businesses?
Money-wise, it would be good, yes, but I, the traffic, I like this, I don't like, I wouldn't like the traffic, but it's really not my personal preference, I guess.
But businesses help support the tax base of, of, of the community.
Yes.
And, and to work on having a good mix for the community is, is what I look for. The Mechanic Falls is a small town. We're not a particularly rich town. Uh, we have a lot of good people. We have a lot of senior citizens who have to live on a fixed income, and I always try to, I am a senior citizen, I always try to make things, uh, look out for their best interest, uh, because it's hard for them to pay their taxes.
Right, I understand. We, um, I actually just built an in-law apartment for my in-laws so that they don't have to face those troubles in the near future. It would just be cost-effective for my family and for them, for them to live with us. So I don't, I definitely get that aspect of.
Okay, I, I just asked that you really look at, uh, businesses and when you do, think of, uh, they are expanding the tax base and, and that helps us all. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I make a motion that we accept Shannon Sturgis to the planning board.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Welcome.
Congratulations, Shannon.
Hey, we're gonna move right on to, uh, 5.1, the Joint Budget Committee and Town Council Public Hearing. So we will open this up for discussion. If you have something that you'd like to add, like to ask or add, please do so, um, and listen to what everyone else is saying, so we don't have to repeat. We have a lot of items on the agenda tonight. Yeah, we, we'll go with our three-minute limit. No one has anything. Okay, well. Please state your name and your address.
David Boyer, 112 Verrill Road. Um, not sure if this is out of order. I came over, I'm the Republican nominee for State House for District 87, uh, which is now Poland to Mechanic Falls, and uh, I saw that you all were having a special town meeting today. And I didn't know if it would be, uh, appropriate or not for me to speak. You know, in Poland, we have a town meeting as well. I guess it's a little bit bigger, uh, and/or different, but I was wondering.
Are you just wanting to introduce yourself?
Yeah, nothing crazy. Um, seemed like a great opportunity to meet a lot of folks that care about the town and that, you know, are interested in its well-being.
Okay.
So I'll stick to three minutes. Uh, my name's David Boyer. I live on Verrill Road with my wife, Sarah. And, um, you know, for me, um, I've been involved in policies and campaigns in Maine for a decade, and I finally decided to get off the, you know, not the sidelines, but, but put, put my own name up there and, and, and make a run for it. I care about limited government, Constitution. I care about cutting taxes, cutting spending, wasteful spending, so that government's there for the people that need it most. I'm worried about the, uh, fixed incomes and the seniors and, you know, fixed income is anybody that makes the same amount of money and works the same amount of hours. Uh, so that's a lot of folks and cost of gas, oil, inflation, uh, and, you know, put that with half Americans look paycheck to paycheck, and it's, it's gonna get pretty scary pretty soon if we don't get the state and this country on the right track. So, uh, I'm looking to do my small part in doing that. Um, I really think that cutting, cutting, uh, spending and lowering taxes will spur the economy and, and, and stop inflation the best we can. I, uh, Sportsman Alliance of Maine member, NRA member, Eagle Scout, uh, I was lucky enough in, in public school to learn about the Constitution, and, and Boy Scouts, I was lucky enough to learn what it means to be American, and I'd like to take those, those principles to Augusta and I just do my best. Uh, you know, I'm not a politician. Uh, if you ask me where I stand on an issue, I'll tell you. You may not agree, but you'll always know where I stand. Uh, you know, in life, all you have is your word and your friends, and if you go back on either of them, you're, you're dead. So, uh, I'll always be honest with you. If, if I have the, uh, opportunity to represent you, uh, the people of Mechanic Falls in Augusta, it would be my honor. Um, and I'm happy to, uh, talk to you guys, uh, after the meeting and be coming by your guys' doors this summer, uh, and I'm gonna work hard and, uh, I hope to win. So appreciate you giving me a couple of minutes here tonight and look forward to seeing how, uh, you, you guys do, uh, government here in Mechanic Falls.
Yes, what was your last name?
Boyer. Put in a couple of flyers if I can just go around real quick.
Oh, sure.
Folks, and if anybody has any questions for me, I'm happy to.
What, what's the district consist of right now?
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, every 10 years after the census, it gets redistricted. So now District 87 is an open seat. It was, um, Poland and was lumped in with, uh, Gloucester. Amy Arata was the representative there. But now it's pretty much 90% of Poland, and then all of Mechanic Falls is the new district. Um, and then I think Mechanic Falls got taken out of the Senate district that was formerly Claxton Reiki District, if you will. Uh, so now Mechanic Falls is Senator Rick Bennett's, um, town. That's the only one for, that we share, and then Poland is the other Senate district, so.
Two senators. It crosses, uh, the county line, the Senate district.
Yeah.
Exactly. There's a Democrat, um, there's an unenrolled that, from my town that's also running, and she's on the select board and I think leans a little more left, uh, but, uh, you know, I'm pretty independent myself. I'm, I'm not gonna, you know, just vote what leadership says. Uh, I think that's why we're in this, this mess as a state and a country when people don't think for themselves and just follow what everyone says. So that's not my style.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving along, I am going to close the, um, Joint Budget Committee and Town Council Public Hearing. We'll move on to 5.2, the Joint Planning Board and Town Council Public Hearing. If you, go ahead, Dick.
I, I hate to do this. Uh, when we created the, the calendar for tonight, um, and we had to publish the public hearings and the public hearing times in the paper.
Oh, I have to wait five minutes? I will wait five minutes.
So he, he actually was a great interlude.
Oh, perfect.
So I don't know if, if you want to sing and dance for us, or?
No, it's, it's the public hearing if people want to talk. It's not.
Oh, we don't have to vote on anything?
It's not. We already voted. This was a public hearing.
So if, if I may, so we have concluded the budget hearing, correct?
Correct.
So then why don't we do the swap-a-roof? Thank you, Budget Committee members. Actually, before you get up, why don't we really do this the right way? Because we know that it takes your time, effort, and energy to, to be a part of all of this, and you are a vital part of the process. I always have felt, being a longtime Budget Committee member myself, that the Budget Committee is the people's filter. And so we really appreciate you taking the time, effort, and energy and serving on the Mechanic Falls Budget Committee, and we hope that you all come back next year, and, uh, maybe we can even add to your, uh, to your, uh, table over there. So thank you very much for serving.
Call the planning board meeting to order. Do you want me to wait a minute or just keep going? Uh, it's 5:45. Members present are Shannon Sturgis, uh, Lou Gulay, and Walter Goss. That's it? No, she's at school concert. First order of business we should have this evening is that we should swear in our new member.
It'll take a
Oh, I didn't want, I didn't want somebody to say you started at five minutes early.
What about the town charter amendment? Do we have to wait till 6:15 to do those?
On the town charter amendment, I just took a guess, right, at all these times. So I put 6:15. So if it's 6:30 by the time we get to it, I think that's okay, because it's just as long as we're not starting before.
Okay.
We give the public due notice to be here for the public hearing if they wish to be. If it starts late, then it starts late.
No, I would just hope that we could do it now.
Me too.
Thank you, Nancy.
Do you agree? Yeah. We're, we're settled. It's gonna be. Yeah. Who was the guy? The guy that lives on Oak Street. Yeah. Sunny? Sunny? Sunny, yeah, Sunny. Who, who was came up to run for the council last spring? Oh, no, no, I'm talking about the council last spring. Cristo. Do you think he's interested in running? I'm working on it.
They're working on me, but I, I just don't have the time.
I, Shannon Sturgis. I, Shannon Sturgis, do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America. Do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America. And of the state of Maine. And of the state of Maine. As long as I shall remain a citizen thereof. As long as I shall remain a citizen thereof. So help me God. So help me God. I swear that I will perform all duties. I swear that I will perform all duties. Incumbent upon me according to the Constitution. Incumbent to me. According to the Constitution. And laws of the state of Maine. And laws of the state of Maine. As planning board member. As planning board member of the Town and Mechanic Falls. Of Town and Mechanic Falls. Until another is chosen and sworn in, in my stead. Until another is chosen and sworn in, in my stead. So help me God. So help me God.
All right, congratulations.
Okay, now we will move on to 5.2, the Joint, Joint Planning Board and Town Council Public Hearing. It's now open.
And as he approaches the podium, just to set the stage for people if they watch, watching on the internet, Alan has a plethora of, uh, changes and information he's about to go through.
Yes, a plethora. So if you have something to say at any point on any of these items during this public hearing, don't hesitate. Please come to the, please raise your hand, say I have something to say or have a question. I'll do my best to answer. Or the planning board can do that as well. But don't hesitate, because we're gonna move through these rapidly. We're not gonna give a ton of time in between. We're gonna say, um, for example, uh, 5.1 is about, uh, simplifying zoning wording for marijuana activities and rural zoning to prohibit, to the prohibited, to the prohibited zones. So anyone have any questions, comments? If no one says so right away, we're ending that part, moving to the next one. Okay? So do you want to start with that?
Yes, do you want me to read each one?
Uh, I can, I can do it if you like.
Okay.
So 5.1, motion to accept, uh, the motion would be, i- if you were to choose that, is to simplify zoning wording for marijuana activities and add rural zone to the prohibited zones. So right now, our ordinance specifies, um, prohibited zones and allowed zones, but some zones are completely left out. We don't need to put the allowed zones. We can just say the prohibited zones, and all others are allowed because they're not listed prohibited. So that's all that has to do with, and I do have, um, signed copies or copies for you to sign, but are there any comments about that?
Okay, moving along.
That's fine, that's.
5.1.
5.1. So 5.2, um, allow existing retail marijuana permit holders to expand on that parcel. So that's an expansion of the people that hold permits now to expand on their parcel, so if they want to have another building, because right now, the state won't allow medical marijuana to be sold in the same building as retail marijuana or recreational marijuana. So are there any questions about that ordinance?
Do we have it? Is there anyone online? No, I don't think so. Okay.
Number 5.3. Just to change the fee, fee structure, which actually isn't part of the land use ordinance, but it's related to the ordinance that's in the land use ordinance, the fee structure for caregivers. And I've offered that, uh, as an example to the planning board. It follows the state tier system for caregivers. Any comments or questions about that?
You're free to move on.
5.4, uh, to clarify the definition of multiple dwelling units. So it literally changes from any dwelling containing more than three, strike out three, and replace it with the word two dwelling units. It's, it was very confusing the way it was. We're just changing that.
What does that mean, Alan?
Um, a multiple dwelling has any, any dwelling that contains more than two dwelling units.
Okay, on, on, uh, what size parcel basis?
It's, it's just no parcel basis, just a dwelling unit. A dwelling unit. So it says, right now, it says, a dwelling containing more than three dwelling units. It's very confusing, because where does two fall into that? So it's really any dwelling containing more than two dwelling units is a multi-unit.
Okay.
Most of this is simplifying so that people understand and there's no questioning.
Yeah, I've had question, repeated questions about things, so please clarify.
I just want to get
So Alan, ju- just to clarify, how, where does an ADU stand in this? It's accessory dwelling, so this is a multiple dwelling, two different things. So that would be two units in the same building? Um, it's an, an accessory dwelling, so it's not related to this item at all. An accessory dwelling is not a principal unit. So an accessory dwelling is a, it could be like an accessory building, a shed. It could be an accessory dwelling, and later on, we do address that in, in here. So that's not related to this at all. It's accessory, so there are specific things about accessory dwelling units, not, not related to multiple dwelling units. So we're talking about one building, more than two dwelling units.
A little more information now, you've got me all confused. So one building, multiple dwellings.
Like an apartment building?
Yeah.
Yes.
Or a home with a, a house with a in-law apartment. That's correct.
That's two, that would be two dwellings in that unit. So that's a multiple dwelling unit.
Okay.
But they, it was three, and so where did two come in?
Right.
Everyone was like, where's two come in? So I have two. Can I have, it's just, there was a lot of questions.
Okay.
So we'll get to more about ADU in a little bit. Okay. 5.5. Uh, to clarify the definition of a two-family dwelling, we basically added the word duplex, because people said, what's a du, well, how about a duplex? So duplexes, we defined it now in that. So that's the change for that. Any questions or comments about that? Number 5.6 talks about, uh, permit duration restrictions on all development projects in general. So this wouldn't specifically apply to solar, because that's specific to solar. It's in the ordinance written there. This is all other development projects. So anything that comes to the planning board, if they approve it, will have this limit on it, these limits, and it basically talks about that. A, a two-year time period limit. And that is for substantial groundbreaking. If they don't do it in that two-year time period, they'll have to file for an extension, and half of their application fee will apply to that. They can apply to two more, uh, years, a year at a time, where the maximum for four years. If after four years, if they don't have substantial groundbreaking, then they're gonna have to apply again. It's to limit that, those projects, and not say you can do that whenever you want in the next 20 years. Any questions about that?
Yep.
I'm gonna be looking at that stuff. Um, it's in the ordinance, so it's up to people to be aware of the ordinances. So if it comes up to the two-year mark, if someone calls me, I can certainly look at the application date and say, yeah, you need to, you need to extend that, or you're gonna, you're gonna forfeit that approval. Yep, so it's not up to the town. That would, that would incur a lot of extra work for, uh, town staff, and we really don't have that time.
Alan, so if someone is having an issue with their property, um, getting, getting things moving and it's been backed up, you can get an extension?
They'll need to show us that. So, um, what this is limiting is we've got a permit and we're just not doing anything right now, but we're gonna hold on to that.
Okay.
So that'll eliminate that.
Because I was, I just had some concerns because right now, things are all over the board.
Oh, gotcha. Yeah, and I, I generally, I, I rule as a code enforcement officer with reason. So I will work with reason with anybody.
Okay, great.
This is just setting a precedent. So that is something to go by.
So anything else? Any other questions on that? 5.6, so you'll notice, um, I, I skipped 5.7 here. It's down in a later part, because I numbered them before, and then I had to change things. So we're gonna go right to 5.8. I'll get to 5.7 later. 5.8 is about, um, allowing attached or detached accessory dwelling units. And maybe, yeah, units, ADU, but must, they must be smaller in square footage and subordinate to the primary structure. So right now, So right now, accessory dwelling units are allowed, but only if they're attached. This changes to allow attached or detached. And that comes about because this, there's a state law now for tiny houses that allow tiny houses, period. So I've had lots of, in 2020 especially, had tons of calls about people looking to bring family members to their garage and build up on their garage and put an ADU there. It's detached. They couldn't do that. They've talked about revamping their shed and making that into a dwelling unit. They can't do that. So this changes that, saying that it can be attached or detached. The planning board has had significant discussion, and we've contacted other area towns about this issue. There aren't a lot of towns that require a, an accessory dwelling unit to be attached. There are a couple, but the planning board decided that they didn't want that for this town. They want to allow people to do that if they can do that. Any questions or comments? 1.58. 5.9. To remove the requirement for an accessory dwelling unit, ADU, to be a minimum of 300 square feet. Any? Do you need me to explain that? It's just a, some of the requirements, people aren't really sure, and even people at the state don't know exactly where these numbers come from. There are lots of times arbitrary numbers. If someone wants to make an accessory dwelling unit that's larger than 300 square feet, they're going to end up paying more taxes for that. They'll end up buying more fuel for that, or more electricity for that. If they want to do that, why would, why would we want to regulate that? Why would we want to stop them from doing that? It has to be subordinate in nature to their primary structure, but the numbers lots of times are arbitrary. So 300 was just out there, and that's eliminating that. Yes?
This will also eliminate the maximum of 600 for an ADU?
This won't, but it comes later, I believe.
So, and when it comes down to it, is it, it's, we've got city areas, we have urban areas.
A, a, a launch? That we don't ask them to, to get rid of their animals. I, I, I would like to see them grandfathered.
Yeah.
Unless there is excessive complaints, because these are their pets.
I never have complaints about chickens, just chickens.
It's the roosters.
It's the roosters. I live by some. I never complain, but I live by some, and I can certainly see why people would complain.
I, I as well.
And what this also does is, those other zones besides these two, there are only two zones we're talking about here. Those other zones are allowed. Sorry about that. But they're allowed.
I, I just don't want anybody who has animals right now, and I guess these, there's a couple of donkeys and a miniature that they're required to get rid of.
Well, first of all, I'm not going there until, you gotta get rid, I know you've had them for 13 years, but you gotta get rid of them now.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Alan.
Yep. Okay, where am I? That's 12. Any questions or comments, any others? And last one is 5.13, to impose a timeframe on a landowner to provide a suitable sewer disposal plan for someone living on their lot. So that people can have individual private camp sites, which I'll tell you what, are really cranking up at numbers around. But the main plumbing rules say you have to have adequate septic disposal. So this kind, this just limits, and you have to do that within seven days of notice. And then I have some actionable steps that I can take. Because if they're doing that, they don't have adequate sewer, and that's not okay.
So do you know where all these places are, some of them?
I know where some of them are.
One's across from me, this way, and then one on the other side.
I, I know where some of them are, yeah. So we can talk afterwards.
So this is, um, the proposed method and location has sewer disposals, so it doesn't have to be a septic on the property?
It has to be adequate sewer disposal. So I would get in the discussion with them about that. And probably if they were arguing with me, I'd call the main plumbing inspector to have a talk with me.
Can, can they feed that into a current septic system, or?
If it's designed for the right number of bedrooms, they can, or they can expand the septic system, or they can go into town sewer. Those are all adequate septic disposals.
A core drive privy is another.
A pit privy is a, is a, a licensed pit privy by a site evaluator is an adequate sewer disposal. They can do that in Maine. Any town can do that.
Thank you.
Yep. So that is it for land use ordinance. We now have two more areas. So we probably need to close the land use ordinance public hearing.
That's right.
We can close the land use ordinance public hearing. At a certain time.
Uh, no, we just.
Just keep going.
Well, the other one is, is that the 6.15?
6.15, but it's okay. Again, if it goes, if it goes late, that's okay. I just don't want to start early.
So the next two are different ordinances. They're not land use. This is 911 addressing ordinance. And you'll notice in your packets that there's not an equivalent, there's not a strike through or line out, that kind of thing. It's because the ordinance was done in a kind of a peculiar way when they did it. It was from 1994. They, they made an ordinance that wasn't laid out correctly, and they also referenced a naming, uh, naming and numbering made, policy manual that was also included in the ordinance. So there's no real good way to reference those. So really, this, that ordinance has gone to legal. They've reformatted it. That's what you have. The only things that changed with that is, in the original ordinance, they specifically talked about how the 911 change addressing was going to occur. It's already occurred. We don't need that in the ordinance anymore. So that's gone away, and they made more clear the requirements for labeling your address for 911 emergency reasons. So that's very clear in the ordinance, which is, by the way, a problem with our current emergency responders. The fire department constantly says that there are lots of houses that aren't labeled, and we can't tell where they are, what number it is. So that's an issue. Once this passes, I do intend to go around and, anyone that doesn't have any numbering on their house, I'm going to talk to them. I'll, of course, talk to them, is what I usually do, talk to them about rectifying the problem. And then later on, if they don't, or they're not going to do that, then I'll be a little bit more forceful because it's really for their own safety and, and fire and response.
So when you're, you're not looking at changing any of the streets?
No, no, none of that.
So all you're looking at is getting homeowners to put the numbers on their houses?
On their house or, or, within the rules.
Yeah.
If their house is 50 feet back, they have to have something at the road. It can be lots of different things, but it really should be a four-inch number someplace that says what number their house is.
Okay, so this is to help the people, the 911 emergency people identify where they're going?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Any other comments about that? Nope. Last one is, oh, I already went over that. Sorry, I went on orders. That was the last of the ordinance. We're good with that. So the last of the ordinance is already, I already covered that. Talking about downtown business, generalization, so it picks on the shares.
You did good.
Wow, nice work, Alan. Thank you very much. Thank you, Alan.
So now we can close and say we're timing the public hearing closed for that. Oh wait, I did want to add one thing about the, adding the rural zone to the marijuana prohibited area. That's currently not prohibited in rural zone. However, on page 111, number four of the comprehensive plan dated May 6, 2013, it says this. Strategies: Limit non-residential development in critical rural areas to natural resource-based businesses and services, nature tourism slash outdoor recreation businesses and public facilities, farmers' markets and home occupations. The company were brought up several instances to me, which I kind of dismissed because it's up to interpretation, but that really isn't. That says, limit non-residential development in critical rural areas. The rural zone, I would think, would be a critical rural area. So that's why that's added to that ordinance.
So once you officially, or 613, according to me over here, once you officially add, later on this evening, based on your agenda format, you will vote on all of these ordinance changes. I'm going to give you an option. You guys do this however you choose to. If you're basically of a mind, yes, all of these changes make sense. It's been through the planning board. It's been approved. Nothing sounds outrageous to you folks, then on the one sheet that Alan has provided, you can make a motion to accept as presented, or you could go motion by motion by motion by motion. The reason why I say you can accept it as presented is because each of these sheets have a signing sheet for you, and so you can accept it as presented and then put your siggies on each one of them, de facto, you have approved it. Okay? So when we get there, you guys decide how you want to do it, but my way offers you a shortcut.
Okay, so we did it once. We would just sign.
Yeah, basically, somebody at the table would make a motion to accept all the changes as presented.
Yeah.
And then Alan has provided you with each of those sheets that, and their signing lines at the bottom of each one.
Okay, so one of ours.
So we would pause for, yeah, we would pause for five minutes and you guys would just have a, a siggy party. Okay? Or you can do it the other way, item by item by item by item. Totally up to you.
Definitely.
Natasha?
So when it comes to that, yes?
May, may I interrupt you for just a second? I want to thank the planning board for doing what they have done. I want to especially thank Alan for all of the hard work that he has done. This has been an ongoing process, if you don't understand, for the last three years, that we've been trying to at least get some changes in updating all of the formants that we have here. And I just wanted to give a thanks to where it is. All has been a great help, so has Shannon and Walter, Lou and Nancy and myself.
And it's only the first round. There, there are many more that need to be tested too.
Yes, thank you very much.
Good you're here.
And I think now the planning board can leave if you would like to, or you can stay.
I bid you all farewell.
Have a pleasant evening. Thank you all, guys, so much for your work.
Yes, okay, moving on. So that was the, that was, I'm going to, now we can move on to 5.3. The town council public hearing. To discuss the town charter amendment change.
All right, I want to set the table a little bit. Okay, so as a part of the town charter, it currently has residency requirement language in the town for, in the charter for the town manager. And it also has mileage requirements for several positions in the town, which might have been great for decades ago, but we live now in the 21st century and getting personnel is harder and harder. And if the town wants to try to hire the best possible personnel, I would like to lift these restrictions, so that way the, the town can do that with the understanding that those that are making the decisions obviously are going to use common sense and, in, in approaching these various positions. So what you have in front of you and what has been posted in the newspaper as legally required are the changes to the town charter. And the changes are basically a strikeout language that strikes out the residency requirement for the town manager and strikes out the mileage and residency requirements for other key personnel. And at the last council meeting, the council decided to go ahead and move forward with this and try to put this on the June ballot for the townspeople to consider. And so as And so as a part of that process, we're here tonight to have a public hearing on the matter. And so if anybody has any questions concerning the residency language or any part of the subject matter, we're willing to entertain said questions.
And our town attorney has said this is okay for us to do without the whole charter?
Yes, great point. So when you, when a town wants to change verbiage in its town charter, it has two courses of action. One is to go through a revision process in which you have to get together a charter commission and hold the meetings. And you have a lot more, several more hoops in which you have to jump through in order to successfully make that happen. There are situations where you can avoid the longer process and go for the shorter process. Which is what we're doing through, instead of a revision, we're simply doing an amendment. And so our amendment is strikeout language amendment. And yes, it has been, uh, gone through with the town's attorney. As a matter of fact, I will read the following. Concerning, I won't, I read you former language. Actually, why don't I do that? It's only a paragraph. So I'm going to read you a couple of paragraphs so that way everybody can understand. It basically lays this out step by step, what the town needs to do in order to make this amendment happen. The lawyer says to proceed, the council should order that a public hearing be held on the proposed amendment. At least seven days before the hearing, notice of the hearing must be published in the newspaper, having general circulation mechanic calls. That has been done. The notice must include the text of the proposed amendment and a brief explanation. That has been done. Within seven days of the hearing, the council shall file with the town clerk the final version of the amendment and an opinion from a main attorney that the amendment does not violate the general laws or the main constitution. And the lawyer says he will provide the opinion. And then upon further conversation in this thread, he says to me, Vic, after the council closes the public hearing tonight, it can vote to schedule the election on the amendment the same night or anytime within seven days of the public hearing. So it's on your agenda to schedule tonight to take that vote. Okay? The final language of the amendment is then filed as a report with a municipal clerk along with my opinion. So assuming that you folks take the vote tonight to approve the language, I will reach out tomorrow to our attorney and send him that language which he sent me. But again, you know, you guys might change it. I don't know. He doesn't know. But assuming whatever that language is, we will send it to him. He will provide the opinion and get it back to me. And once he gets the, um, once he gets that back to me, we have to also file that with the town clerk. He says the final language of the amendment is then filed as a report with a municipal clerk along with my opinion. He says it's premature for me to provide the opinion until we see the final language, which could change after the public hearing, though unlikely. Please just send the final language as approved on March 23rd and I will get the opinion to you right away. This is also due within seven days of the public hearing, March 30th. Please let me know if you have any questions. So my task tomorrow, assuming you approve this, is to get in touch with him right away. And then to get Janice all of the information as an official record to the clerk's office. And also on your agenda tonight, should you choose to vote it, is to not only authorize the language for the June ballot, but also to officially say, you want this on the June 14th ballot. So those are those, the two issues in front of you concerning the charter language this evening.
I make a motion that we accept the charter amendment language?
Uh, may I, may I, so you just, always because we, I think we got to cross Ts and D's.
That's right.
Holly, you're not usually one to jump a gun.
So I need to make sure if you have them, that you do officially take this into the public hearing for us.
Yes, we are, we are currently in the public hearing. So we have, if we have, if no one has anything to say, questions to ask, we can close the public hearing and then we can move on. Okay, I'm getting a lot of not to have. We can close the public hearing on the town charter amendment issue.
All right, and so you need to make sure you get that. Because we got to make sure we get this right.
That's 624.
Excellent.
I make a motion that we accept the charter amendment language.
It does come up later. Yeah, what can I do here?
Wow, you're really excited.
Yeah, so, moving along. So now that's closed, we will move on to general comments from the public. And we have no public who has any general comments. So we will move on to council discussion topics.
I have a comment?
Okay.
Oh, I walk around town and, um, it, I know this is a kind of a tough time of the year, but I'm seeing a lot of, of buildings that could use a little cleanup. That's just a comment. I don't know how you address that. That's a tough one.
I'm addressing it.
Oh. Do you have an idea what I'm talking about?
It's kind of tough. I don't know specifically, but there's several places.
Yes, there are.
It's one right on hand, the Walker Road across the street.
It is difficult and, you know, I don't ask. I just wanted to mention that I do, do my walk around town and, I know that some places accumulate over the winter and then they clean things up in the spring. But there's a few that just continue to accumulate. And I guess neighbors aren't complaining yet.
Is there?
Oh, there?
When we get the next one, uh, report, we'll see.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make that as a general comment.
And I want to give notes to Mr. Plummer and the planning board because they have been working so hard, especially the last three years. And they are doing phenomenal work. And we do not realize how lucky we are to have the group of individuals that we have on there. And the co-its officer that we currently have. We are very blessed to have both groups right now. We have a wonderful working group.
Thank you very much for all your work.
You got a pat yourself on the back for the couple of years you were on the planning board till you got off. Thank you for that.
Holly plays planning board member on the council. We're always like, great councilwoman. Thank you for that information. That's the planning board's job. Okay, any more topics of discussion that have the council? Moving on to the town manager report. Do you have one to make?
Um, I could binge your ear for an hour and a half. I won't do that tonight. So I don't have a town manager report. We do have our meeting coming up in a week and a half or so. And so I'll have some items there. I do, again, if anybody wants to sit one-on-one with me at any time, I'll be more than happy to entertain you and fill you in on all sorts of things. Or I'll do that on the course. Okay?
Okay then. Moving on to old business, 9.1, charter amendment language vote.
I make a motion that we accept the charter amendment language as presented to us for the modifications to the charter.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
I make a motion that we add the charter amendment to the June 14th ballot warrant.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, let me have it there.
Moving on to 9.3. Any V Street questions?
Okay, um, so hot off the press, I did get an updated, um, book value from CMP this morning. It's a few hundred dollars lighter. So all of the poking and prodding at least saves us a few hundred bucks. And so I don't have a figure with me, but on the 4th, we will discuss that. Okay? So for tonight, in my webinar, what, you know, interview with Real Term Energy, good people, by the way. Our, our project manager is from Montreal and she is WIS. And, you know, with modern technology and everything, she's right on it. And again, these people do this every day, you know? So they've been a very big help to me. And so as a part of the agreement that, that we have signed with them, the timeline I gave to you at the last meeting calls for, as a part of the process, for us to go out to bid for the light bulbs that, that you want to acquire. The pieces of information I gave you play into a possible shortcut that they suggested. And so if you take a look at this hieroglyphic map, that's a part of your packet. So the reason why this map is important, for those of you out there, the reason why this map is important, it shows, again, Real Term Energy has swapped out the streetlights in Lewiston, Auburn, Oxford, Norway and Paris. And other communities throughout the state of Maine, but in our neck of the woods. So they wanted to illustrate on the map kind of what it looks like. And so every one of these communities, every one of these communities have used the same bulb. An Acuity brand bulb. And so their, their thought was, if you want to try to keep it looking unified, if you will, by going with the same kind of a bulb, then it would bypass, you could bypass the bidding process just go with the Acuity bulb for continuity sake. And whatever bulb you choose is a part of this process, you then have to talk about, do you want it to be a sharper, brighter light? Or something that more reflects what our current streetlights and most current streetlights have been, which is closer to the 3K. And the K is Kelvins. And basically, it has to do with the sharpness or the slightly orange hue that we're accustomed to. And Norway, Paris and Oxford, I was a part of that process. We wanted to make sure that we had the 3Ks. The 4K versions, Lewiston and Auburn are actually the only communities in the state of Maine working, that work with Real Term, that have chosen the 4K. All other communities have chosen 3K or even less. Some of the coastal communities, I think I sent you something on this, that reflected 2,700 and...
I'd say most of them went with the 2,700.
Yeah, so as a part of my conversation and my homework with them, to bring to you, to ask you the two questions. Do you want to do the bidding process or just take the shortcut and do the Acuity bulb? And number two, whichever you choose, would you prefer the, what Kelvin bulb would you, brightness would you select? And so I just now toss it to you.
Two questions. Are we required to do a rep and put out and figure this out? Or are we allowed to choose the specific company's bulb?
So because this is, um, the answer falls that you have the flexibility to do what you want because of two different reasons. The first, most major reason is you're, you're doing a contract with the general contractor, which is Real Term Energy. So they are acting on your behalf to, to do this. So the people that we pay are going to be Real Term Energy. And so as a part of their homework, they either need to put it out to bid or do this shortcut because of the unique continuity option. And worst case scenario, even if none of that were in the plan, your new purchase policy says that yes, if it's above a certain threshold, you should go out to bid. But it also allows other outs. For example, if, if, um, in this case, Real Term, working through Real Term, they're going to be the unique provider of the service, of the, of the, of the service and the bulbs. And in a unique service situation, if there's only one vendor that can really do it, you've already chosen Real Term, so de facto, it's not a problem. So on both levels, major and minor, there would be no problem concerning eliminating the bid process. And there is one other upside. It's only a couple of weeks. But where you did not opt to do the pre-maintenance program while the project's underway, this means by taking the shortcut, the project can, in theory, get done even sooner. So there's, there's that. Whatever, whichever, I mean, going through the bid process is still very viable. And if that's what you want to do, we'll do it. But I'm just giving you options that could make sense.
What was your other question?
Yeah, the other question I have is, having done research on the two different bulbs, the brighter bulbs tend to be a nuisance in certain parts of town. Is there an option to have the brighter ones for like right downtown and the softer ones for residential?
You could, you could do that. You could do that.
Would we have to pick where they went? Would they?
Yeah, that's what you would have to do. That's, that's exactly what you would have to do.
Like literally on the, on the map where the lights are?
Yeah, because I remember that question when I was dealing with this in Paris. And yes, you can, because, um...
But then you'd have to scare, have two sets of spares.
Yes, this is true. You got to make sure that the maintenance company on the back end has both sets, tons of bulbs available, right?
We have more lighting. There are more bulbs in town, correct? So there are more locations of the bulbs in town, right?
So you guys need to get...
Yes, like at the bridge.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying.
Do you need a stronger light if you have a lot?
So the, the, you sent me another follow-up sheet.
I mean, when I look at, because this is where I come from, but if you look at Waldenboro, Thomassons, and I wonder if they maybe did a trip, a group of towns, because they're all pretty much connected. But Waldenboro, Thomassons, South Thomassons, Camden, Rockland, Rockport and Union, all up with the 2,700. I mean, Rockland's a pretty, it's bigger than us by far. Like, and they found the 27 to be sufficient. That's, that's what I look at.
Because they'll be overlapping from one language.
Well, I mean, you're talking like, though that gamut of like Waldenboro is probably equivalent to us. They're probably bigger landmass, but they're, they have it in town like we do. They have police, I mean, it's probably as close to us as we, we could be. And they also went with the 2,700. So I, I mean, I just, I, I wonder, I personally, as one who lives in town, I don't want to sit under a light that's blazing away.
Yeah. And I, yeah, I mean, we're just not, I mean, Lewiston, Auburn is one thing because there's, it's, it's a much bigger city. For us, for uniformity, I would go with 3K versus the 27 just because, for the uniformity. But I don't think we need any 4K personally.
Right, I mean, there's probably not a lot of difference between 2,700 and 3 that I know of.
So the, the only thing that Mark had mentioned to me about the 2,700, and the reason why a lot of the coastal communities have gone with the 2,700 is because that, that coastal nighttime view, you know? They, if the, if there's, they wanted something that's soft enough so you could still enjoy, you know, with your glass of wine as you look out over the cliff, blah, 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 right?
For a few years.
So, yeah, and so for, for that aesthetics type of reason.
Which makes sense. Which makes sense.
So I, he did, I don't know if I sent you this one sheet, but there is a, there is a one sheet here that basically says some of the points that you guys just said, and even with the 3,000, it's, he says, still wider than, but closer to the existing high-pressure sodium streetlights, which is around 2,200K. So what you have now is around 2,200, so 2,700 would be a little bit, you know, a little bit more. 3,000 again seems to be the norm in almost all the communities, other than those coastal ones and, and Lewiston, Auburn, uh, going with the fours. Everybody else has gone with the threes. So your decision, you, you tell them.
But the three that are up, I mean, the three that are outside of us that we're looking at in this map are the three that did it all together, right?
Right.
So they made, like, they probably got a package deal.
Yes.
Again, like the coastal ones, those are all 2,700, they probably got a package deal.
Yes, I wouldn't be shocked, I would not be shocked.
So that might be why they went with, they all went with the 3K to get the package.
Yeah, yeah.
You mean like instead of, like, we could go?
Well, right, I mean, we can, we can do whatever we want to because we're not in a package deal with anything else.
Right, 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 correct. But then you're not thinking 4K, are you?
Uh, no, I would either rather be 2,700, I, I, I don't, it's hard because I'm like, I want to drive home to see what the 2,700s look like compared to the threes, but I don't, I can't imagine it being much different.
All I can tell you is that right from the drop, and, and, you know, I, I asked you folks to take a drive around, I don't know if you did or didn't. I drive to South Bears every night, and it's later, later now, thank goodness, but, you know, um, I was really paying attention a lot as I'm driving home most nights and, you know, I, for me and my personal opinion, I think it's about right.
Probably seem normal.
Yeah, yeah, you know, really, you know, but this is your town, you guys do whatever you choose.
And you say what we currently have is equivalent to the 2,700 or?
Uh, he says, which is 22, 2,200.
That's why I was wondering, and three would be a little more than we want, but I mean, that, I, that makes me wonder, but I'm not saying it's a deal for you.
Well, and my, and that's what my concern was, couldn't you do a mix, because it's like water street in places where there's homes and residents that have, is there much, that much of a difference?
I would caution against.
I'd rather do all, I'd rather do right, I'd rather.
Yeah.
And that's why he mentioned those fixtures, I can't remember what it's all of them, those fixtures where you could change, bring them down, make them like.
Oh, the smart controls.
Yeah, the smart controls, that's what that's for, but I don't, I mean, I think you just go with some.
Now, if we go with, say, 3,000 and we find that we're getting complaints from certain areas, is it a big deal to change it out for the lesser bulb?
I don't deem this as flippant as it sounds, but yes, it's just money, right? So if you really found that this was a major problem and pitchforks were in the air, swap them out, and you got to do it, I mean, it could be done, it's just more money, right?
Yeah.
But I, again, I don't mean it the way it sounds, it's.
I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
So all that to say, we have some options. Peter has a question. Peter, you want to come up?
Like he just said.
Can you speak into microphones with Peter?
We don't do that.
Like he was just saying, his last meeting when you guys were talking about all this stuff, it's like minimums four hours for them to come out and do something like that?
Oh, that was for the pre-project, and they decided not to do that. So the post-project is going to be a whole different maintenance deal because it's ongoing and uh, don't quote me, $2,000 fixtures, but I think, yeah, $2.
It was roughly $2 per fixture, per month, right?
Which would total out, I mean, you've got 102 fixtures. And that's Mike's skew one and two, right?
Four hours, you didn't like, oh, well, let her change them.
Yeah, yeah, so in the end, with, with the maintenance program and at the end of this, the town should be saving close to 80% of the cost that we're spending now. I think they project like 78, 77%.
Do you want a motion?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we go with the, uh, get this, the 2,700K for all the street lighting, for the LED streetlights in town. For mechanic bulb.
I'll second that. Sorry, I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right, so 2,700.
2,700.
Okay, and the sole sourcing or the bidding?
I make a motion we sole source. I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
There you go. Moving on to new business, 10.1, fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget warrant vote.
I make a motion that we accept the FY 2022, 2023 budget warrant vote as presented.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yeah, we will, I want you to, actually, I want you to take this page and sign it. Thank you, Congress.
I just used it as an excuse to get up.
All right, moving on, 11.1, land use ordinance changes. And as we discussed earlier, Paula, you can do a motion for, do it all.
I make a motion that we accept all the land or, land use ordinance changes as presented.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, do you want to do the livestock one?
Yeah, you're going to do a signing party, but where you mentioned land use, you're going to need to make another motion for the livestock and the 911.
And you actually need to add 911 on the agenda because it didn't show up on there. So it's three total.
I make a motion that we add the 911 amendment to the agenda.
And the livestock.
No, livestock.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
I make a motion that we accept the livestock ordinance and 911 ordinance changes as presented.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Excellent, now you get a signing party.
Yes.
I like these blue pens, please use them.
How do I buy them?
I'm going to just glue it, I don't care.
Well, I'm keeping it then. Just let me cut those and that's close.
I don't know, maybe. So you don't have our names on the emergency?
Nope. Pick a, pick a spot where you're going to sign.
You want to start some down here in the cyclone group, or you want to simply?
No, they're coming, be patient, come on, it's going to bang this out tonight, we did it.
We did awesome.
Oh, yeah, I was just sitting here thinking, that's a lot of work to do, over an hour.
Yeah, we thought it was going to go to late at night, about a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
Right, well, we've been talking about a lot of this stuff.
Somebody will come in.
Alan, Alan did a good job.
Yes, very nice present presentation, that's really.
We very blessed to have the current code officer that we have.
Because I worked with main states headed for two years and, let's get it done, watching Troy Jackson. I work for Derek Graham, he does it.
What's that?
I work for Derek Graham, he gets it done.
Oh, yeah. He knows his way around the ball.
Hey, we get to the end here?